Our numbers, I can give you the Iowa numbers as of right now. We have 336 positives. We have 5,013 negatives. We have four deaths in the state of Iowa. And I am drawing a blank on Dubuque County numbers right this minute, but I'll look them up and tell you. Wisconsin, we've had, Wisconsin has had 1,112 positives. They've had 16,000 negatives with 13 deaths. Illinois has had 4,500 positives, 22,000 negatives with 65 deaths. Just a couple of updates to share with you. We do have, we're getting close in our committee with our testing screening center. We're hoping to, well, the group is hoping to get the approval of the CEOs of the hospitals and healthcare providers by the end of this week. So more information to come with that, hopefully, if not by Wednesday, on Friday. The brain health group is having a conference call this week looking at some interventions that can be shared within the community. Friday evening, we did get the instructions on how to make the fabric masks from the Iowa Department of Public Health. I have talked with our liaison who is coordinating that. We're hoping to get information out on our daily update, on the incident command update that we do send out on a daily basis, which can be found on the Dubuque County website as well as the city website. And what we are explaining to people are that if they are making masks and they have a place that is requesting those masks, to arrange for a pickup with that place. Otherwise, if people are making masks and have no place for a delivery, we are looking at utilizing the training center for a drop off for those masks as well. But we're really encouraging the people that we've talked to over the weekend, if they do have a setting that they're specifically making those masks for, just to contact that site and arrange for their own pickup with that. We did have a state webinar yesterday looking at updating all of the hospital beds, equipment, and other supplies that the hospitals were to have. The hospital, and Tom, you can speak a little bit more on this as well because it does involve more with the supplies. But the hospital alliance group is going to be making daily contact with all of the hospitals throughout the state. They're hoping to have a completed inventory done by Thursday. They are going to correspond with the hospitals directly on a daily basis to see how they're doing, what needs that they may have and any, well, basically, any needs that they may have. We did start with our VNA call center this weekend. And let's see here, Stacy was planning on sending me those numbers, but she, I don't see an email yet from her. So before I hang up after Tom's report, if I do get it from them, I will let you know, otherwise, I can let you know on Wednesday. We are looking at doing two nurses as a backup with the visiting nurse association at, with our communicable diseases because, as you know, we did have increased cases this past weekend. And we really feel as though we need additional nurses to make those contacts in an efficient manner, which we did do. But it would be much better if we did have two nurses, for sure, on call. We did get a report from our immigrant group, and they're going to be looking at interventions that can be done with the Pacific Island group. So they're forming that group this week. Actually, they started over the weekend to look at the healthcare needs and interventions that can be presented to that group. And that's pretty much all of my list for right now. So I'll let Tom talk, and I'll get back to you with the VNA call center.
Okay, good morning. Oh, go ahead.
Excuse me, I was gonna see if anybody had any questions for Patrice.
Sorry.
Jay or Ann?
I have some, this is, I have some questions.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sure. Patrice, I don't see on the website a daily update. I guess I'm gonna need to have you show me where that is specifically. I didn't even know that we had a daily update. When I look at the website, it continues to have some information, understandably, that's a few days old, which, you know, is pretty immediate other than in this unusual time. So I guess if you think it's there, maybe we're gonna need to do some kind of a tutorial of how we get through things even on our own website. So that's one question.
So Ann, do you have the website in front of you? There's an icon, okay, the icon that has the Dubuque Countywide response to coronavirus COVID-19. If you click on that, it will list all of our updates. And then you can go to March 26th, March 24th. Those should be all of our daily updates. They get posted on there on a regular basis. And then if you click on those links, that will take you to that update of that day.
I guess, again, we'll probably need to do a tutorial. I, when I go to the homepage, there you are. It says, "Get latest information." I think people are still being told to wash their hands and not go to work or leave the house when they're sick, which, you know, again, I think we have moved beyond that. And I understand it's a disconnect between Iowa Department of Public Health and what localized leaders are saying. But I'm gonna ask you yet again if we can't put some kind of a more firm statement on our website indicating that the Board of Supervisors would like to have people stay home. That's, I think, an important thing to say. And we might need to click through the website. Maybe we can do that live, and you can show me on Wednesday how bad I am at technology. I would love to be shown that.
I may not be the best teacher.
Well, and I think Nathan maybe can flip through some of that for us. He's with us here today, so maybe he can look at that for Wednesday. On the testing screening centers, does that include the drive-throughs? I'm not sure what testing screening centers all is. If you could be more descriptive about that.
Yes, I am not part of that group, but we do have a liaison that's working on that group. And yes, it would be basically the parking lot setup. People would drive through, be assessed, be screened, and if needed, be tested on the site. And of course, there's a lot of details that are going into this project. But over the weekend, our report was, was that they're ready to, getting close to finalizing the plan. And then they will have to have the approval from the CEOs, from the hospitals, medical associates, Grand River, all of those partners that are part of this committee.
Okay, on the immigrant group follow-up, you identified the Pacific Island community. I am concerned about a Guatemalan population as well as other immigrant families. So is that liaison identifying immigrant populations beyond the Marshall, the Marshallis and the Pacific Islanders?
Yes, they are.
Okay, thank you. When, when a person has a positive test result in Dubuque County and the VNA is following up through the public health nurse, are they tracing those contacts with them? So person X has identified positive. Does anyone trace back their prior 48-hour contacts?
The Iowa Department of Public Health has strict guidelines of what the communicable disease nurses do. And yes, they do do the contract tracing. They go back to the people who were in the closest proximity, but every situation is different depending on if they traveled from another state or if they were, whatever the case may be. So yes, they do. They follow the protocol that is given to them by the Iowa Department of Public Health with that case.
Would it ever be possible for us to see the Iowa Department of Public Health protocol?
Absolutely, we can do that on Wednesday.
Great, my other question then is for positives. Do we have, and I know that you can't be specific about persons, and I realize there's not information you can give me, but I think a general answer will help. Do we know if there are patterns of association? Again, person X has identified as a positive to COVID-19. Are we, through protocols or otherwise, looking at patterning? Are we, do we know if there's workplace or family members? Or, you know, are we looking for the common elements? Is someone doing that?
Yes, Iowa Department of Public Health is. Once the communicable diseases, disease nurses have done their contacting, it is called the red cap, that they have to enter all of that information into, and that goes directly to the Iowa Department of Public Health. Our field epidemiologist right now is gathering that information for our region and then sharing it with the state epidemiologist. So yes, that's how they are collecting their data for the whole entire state.
Is there going to be, but at the local level, can you tell us whether there are any patterns to association of the individuals who in our county now, I think, I don't know if it's 16, I'm sorry, I don't know off the top of my head, but how many, do we have patterns?
Ann, let me check to see what I can share, okay?
Thank you.
And I will share, I'll share what I can on Wednesday.
Understand, and then I'd like to know, when I listened to the governor over this, might have been Friday, maybe it was yesterday, she discussed the regionalization of hospital beds and that that's something that they're gonna begin to discuss. And maybe it's this Thursday, I hope it's this Thursday and not a week from Thursday, but that there's a regionalization plan being developed about utilization of hospital beds in, even in Iowa, of overwhelmed regions or where there are numerous folks in ventilators, and then also looking at other combined, you know, just what the regional resources are. Can you address that, your understanding of it?
Yes, and that's what I was talking about with our, Tom and I were part of our state webinar. Actually, our regional state webinar yesterday afternoon, right before the governor's press conference. And that's what they had shared with us is that the, and Tom can better talk on this because it involves supplies. But the Iowa Alliance Group will be making daily contact with all of the hospitals in the state of Iowa, I believe, on a daily basis. They are collecting all of that information for the supplies, equipment. They hope to have all of that together by Thursday, the end of the week, for sure. So yes, we, that program was just rolled out to us yesterday before the governor had her press conference.
Well, I'm looking beyond supplies. I guess I'm looking at the limited resources also of medical care providers. And so if we look at a regionalization plan, will we be also able to give input and also prior, prior knowledge or any advance warning of when our local medical staff and our frontline folks are gonna be involved on a regional basis? So if Iowa City reaches the point, or Cedar Rapids, where they can no longer handle the more rapid number of patients that they are getting, would those individuals ever be sent to Mercy One? Do we know that, or is that the plan that's being formed?
That's part of the plan being formed, Ann. What they had shared with us, again, it's a new program. They're working on it probably even last night into today. But what they were talking about is that when the hospitals are contacted, they will have to inform their contact person if they're agreeing, if they're okay, a yellow, if they're starting to see an increase in admissions, or a red, if they're starting to see that there's a rapid increase of admissions or staff reduction, or whatever the case may be. They had explained that even though they'll check in at one part of the day, they do know that that green could change to red in a matter of a couple of hours. So they are looking at formulating a program even on that yellow level if assistance, whether it be healthcare providers or supplies, might be needed, that they will start looking into that. They said if it really got at that red code, that they actually do have National Guard all lined up to be able to assist in those situations if needed. And I'll let Tom, because Tom was on the same webinar, if he misunderstood, or if you understood it, or did I misunderstand that language, Tom?
I think you're correct with that, Patrice. I mean, that's the way I understood it. But there was a lot of information given to us in an hour and 15 minutes or whatever it was, so I need to go back and review. And hopefully, we get something in writing from them by email, how this is all gonna work. But one thing with it, it's gonna help because right now the hospitals are getting bombarded with questions as far as supplies, you know. So I'm trying to get what local supplies we have here out to them if they need it. Then they're getting contacted from elected officials wanting to know what their supplies are. And then the governor and through the EOC is also asking the hospitals. So, and just in talking to one of the ER directors the other day, they're just getting bombarded with surveys. So hopefully, this will fine tune it. Some of the surveys that they're doing at the state level, we don't get that information. So that's problematic. So hopefully, these regional groups will be able to get the information and then share it with us, is what I'm hoping.
Patrice.
So a question.
Go ahead, go ahead, Ann.
Well, there's a question that's coming in from just group chat. And so I just wanna make sure that we have an answer. It's a fair question. You know, the concern is the liaisons that seem to be growing in number, and appropriately so, immigrants, you know, now we have face masks and so forth. If we would know who those folks are, elected officials and legislators, the whole legislative team is being asked by individuals multiple questions about how, what do we do, where do we go, you know, what the, what can I even put on my website? What's true, true information on my own Facebook page? And obviously, you have limited numbers and time in your day, but we don't know who those liaisons are. Is there any, any interest in, is that ever going to be shared with us more directly? Follow-up to that, I think, is, is this still helpful to you to meet with us? It's certainly helpful to me, but I don't wanna be in your way of doing more urgent things.
Okay, I can start with the liaison contacts. Again, we were asking people to contact one of the instant command people if they had a question about a certain group. That being Tom Berger, Stacy Killian, Mary Rose Corrigan, and myself. We are so thankful that these people are being our liaison and coordinating all of these groups and looking at the intervention, well, basically, looking, doing a quick assessment and looking at the interventions needed for regardless of whatever the program is. We do not want the public to be bombarding our liaison people with individual questions or concerns. We want them to be able to target with what they have been asked and they are willing to do for us. Our instant command team can reevaluate to see if we should continue on that line or not. But we would just rather have any questions or concerns with any group that we have with a liaison to come through one of us and then let us contact that liaison person. And then, Ann, I forgot your, the last, oh, the grouping of us meeting with the Board of Supervisors? Well, we were, we, as you are aware, and you probably are too, we have webinars throughout the whole entire weekend. So we don't mind sharing the information, but we're almost finding that we're not having time to even put our thoughts together because one meeting runs into another and to another. But we would love to communicate. This is so much nicer to let the public know, our Board of Health know, our Board of Supervisors know what we are doing and what, you know, what we are still needing to address. So I do like this, this communication setup. I don't know if a Monday, Thursday would be better. I don't know, I'm, we can play it. We'll do whatever you ask us to do, I'll just say that.
I understand that, and that's why I'm asking because we don't want to do something that, at least I don't, that burdens you. I, we need the information, but there needs to be opportunity for you to say if something would work better.
Tom and I'll talk about it, and we can get back to you if you don't mind. Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Yeah, Patrice, Dave Baker, I had a question. You had made a reference to the National Guard being ready to go. Can you be, can you define that, be more specific? Are they actually standing by, or are they sending out notices to report? Or where are we at with that?
Sure, that was, sure, that was just shared with us yesterday in the webinar. And as Tom had said, we just need to go through that because that was a lot of information thrown to us in that hour and 15 minutes yesterday. But it's my understanding, everything with the National Guard is coordinated through the state. We have no say nor any control over that at all. It would be all regulated through the Iowa Department of Public Health and the Governor's Agency, or the Governor's Office.
So we wouldn't be able to find out, you wouldn't be able to find out what the response time would be if indeed they're needed?
You know, Tom, I'm not aware.
If you don't know, that's okay, I just, I guess I.
No, I'm not aware, yeah, no, I'm not aware at all, sorry.
To see if we can follow up on that, maybe discuss it with the team. And, you know, I think it falls under preparedness and readiness. So I would appreciate a follow-up on that, Wednesday will be fine.
Okay.
Supervisor Wickham, any questions for Patrice?
No, not at this time.
Okay. Anything else, Patrice?
Nope, that's all for now.
Okay, we'll go to Tom Berger for his report.
Just to follow up on the National Guard, Dave, it's really depends on what you need them for. And one of the examples they used, if ambulance services get over, overtaxed and is a last-ditch effort, would the National Guard be able to move patients between communities and such to supplement EMS? Now, that'd be a way down the pipe, you know, in order to do that. Sorry about that. The, and then are we gonna need them for flooding? Are we gonna need them to assist law enforcement? So it's kinda, it probably all depends on what we're asking them to do, you know, how long it'd take to respond. But we can follow up on that, definitely.
Okay.
Most of the, my report yesterday, everything kinda revolved around the EF1 tornado that went through near Sherrill on Saturday night. So getting that information with the, down to the weather service, working with the Sherrill Fire Department in order to do our damage assessment, just like everybody else, the COVID-19 is not allowing the weather service to come out and do their damage assessment unless it's a significant tornado with injuries and such. So hopefully, we're getting following-ups with that today, getting some more data and getting it down to them. But that's kinda where, where that is. As far as the EOC this week, we're, our crews are out delivering requested supplies to some of the healthcare facilities this morning. Working on getting surveys back from EMS over the weekend and then our long-term healthcare community. So again, that's where I'm hoping this, this regional, if they're required to submit that to the region, and we can get that, it'll give us a better idea of all the medical supplies that are available in our region. At least, that's the way I'm hoping it works with that. Also have a meeting, Zoom meeting, update meeting set up for tomorrow night for fire and EMS in the county, or fire and EMS associations to talk about different things, update them on what's going on through the, through the EOC and what's going on with their public health incident management team. So that will go on, and then I'm gonna work on scheduling our city call, again, their EOC update for the cities. That'll probably be Thursday afternoon where I can get them, working on getting them incident command forms out that they can report back and make sure we're communicating the information from both the public, public health incident management team and our PIOs and the JEC and everything. So that's kinda where, where we're setting at at this point.
Hey, thanks, Tom. Questions for Tom?
Tom, go ahead, Jay.
Supervisor Jay Wickham, if you can just comment on some of the damage that the tornado did and the classification of the damage and if there were any injuries or fatalities.
There was, there were not any injuries reported yet to me. When we went around yesterday, there are a couple farms that were near the area of Finley's Landing Road and Balltown Road were pretty well destroyed. There was some damage to the homes. As far as I know, some windows were broken out of the homes, so I think they're staying with family there. Very lucky, there was, there was no injuries. It was about a four-mile path that the tornado went through, and you can kinda see the debris field. But there was numerous people up there helping them, just like in good old Dubuque County fashion, and all the neighbors helping, helping them get it back on their feet. So hopefully, the deal like that will, will be insured through, you know, tornado, through the homeowners or whatever they have insurance for, hopefully. But we're also work with them to see if there's any unmet needs as well. So there was some livestock lost in, in one of the, one of the farm buildings. And then you can pretty much see the line where it went, went through, and outbuildings were mainly, mainly damaged and destroyed. So very lucky, nobody was injured, yes.
Greatly appreciate it.
My question is, a little, probably a little more broad range, but some comment back from individuals. It's without a local news reporting service, there's dissatisfaction with the ability to get real-time information from our regionalized partners for weather updates, especially on the weekends. At some point, because of the nature of these storms and our climate changes, we might need to look at some kind of localized response that we can stream or Facebook Live or something where people can get up-to-date information from a Dubuque County source. Now, maybe that already exists and I, we just don't know it. Or maybe we're going to be turning a corner with regard to storms and rain events where we're gonna need to get a more localized response in terms of information. Do you have any ideas?
There's all kinds of information out there. And with this one, it was a little difficult because of the warning expired at 8:15, but it, you know, it did not hit up at the Sherrill area till 8:25 in that time. So the, both Channel 9 and 7 were live up until the end of the expiration of the warning. So if that would've went on till 8:30, if the warning would've lasted that long, then they would've been live as two of the stations that I know, which go live on tornado warnings in their area.
You're talking again about television, and more and more of our citizens don't necessarily have local television. They're gonna be using online resources.
The best thing they can do is go get a weather radio that would be alerted when there is the warnings, and they'd have that information, you know, if they would lose their television and such. But that's about the best information, if they sign up for the, or if they have the wireless emergency alerts on their phone, that's another way they can get the information. Most of that does come from the weather service, so, yes.
Right, but I think it's an unmet need in our community that we need to explore.
Yeah, and, you know, the outdoor warning sirens, you know, people always talk about them, but they are for outdoor warning sirens, and they're not in the rural area. So, you know, that really isn't a, you know, isn't an option there, too. So we really push the Noah Weather radios. And, I mean, anybody that was looking at, or listening to, I'm not sure about any radio stations that were, were live that night, but, you know, the storm was moving up that direction. So unfortunately, the warning just expired on it.
I know, Tom, I know for a fact that Michael Kay from KDTH was live in the studio. And I, I have the Channel 7 and Channel 9 weather apps and they were reporting on it. I was following on my phone, so I didn't, I wasn't watching live TV at the time. So I, I think they're doing a pretty good job getting word out there. But I agree, weather radio is good. I have one in my boat, very important tool.
Thank you.
All right, other questions for Tom? I have a question from the chat group. And I guess it's for Tom and/or Patrice. Let's see. Well, it's from Representative Eisenhardt. Who are, who are these various liaisons as legislators? We often get contacted about various needs and it would be good to put people directly in touch with the folks who are leading those efforts and can answer the questions that we can't or shouldn't.
Yeah, I think they, Patrice could talk a little about that, but we'll discuss it at our incident management meeting either today or tomorrow and try to, to see what can be shared. But as far as elected officials, you know, they can always reach out to Terry Goodman and she can get them the information through the Joint Information Center too. That's always an option for them as well.
Okay, thank you. Other questions for Tom? Before, Tom, before you go back on hold, I did want to report that there will be a press conference this afternoon at 4 o'clock. It'll involve the providers from the community, Mayor Buell, myself. Obviously, our team will be involved in that. And so 4 o'clock today, there will be a joint press conference. And for media attending in person, it'll be at the EOC or the Fire Safety Training Center at 4 o'clock.
Karen Baker, can you give us more information about the purpose? That is obviously first time I've heard of this as well, but you know, what is the subject, the purpose? Any information that's going to be shared? Am I to tune in at 4 o'clock as well? Or can you give us a kind of a heads up on some things?
I assume the local media will be covering. We had a, an Ann, I wasn't able to give out any information because I was on a conference call from 9:30 to 9:57, right before this meeting. So didn't give me a lot of time. Apologize for that. But the principals for the medical groups and hospitals were, were on the call. We're going to have, they're going to try to have a physician. They mentioned Dr. Ron Iverson, maybe available maybe at the, at the meeting. And there's going to be a, you know, discussion about this unified effort between the providers. And they're going to, you know, each group will explain. I believe the hospitals will go first and then the other medical providers. So again, they'll be talking about their, their efforts and how they are working together.
So what, what information do you intend to say or speak on behalf of the board?
I am working on that as we speak. I was going to get with Patrice and Tom after this call. Again, I didn't have time to do that. And the, the press conference also is right after the Governor's press conference, which is at 2:30. So what we're working on now may change by, by that time. But, you know, we will report on, you know, probably be similar to what Patrice and Tom have reported on here today.
So you're not asking for any orders or proclamations or declarations? You're not intending to speak on behalf of the Board of Supervisors? Is that correct?
Ann, I think, hopefully you know that I would come to you and Jay before I did that. So no, I'm not making any proclamations. You don't have to worry about that. I will, I'll be speaking on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, but I will be disseminating information that I get from Patrice and Tom. And I'm probably going to talk a little bit about Chris Gersh's efforts and her staff and her team at Sunny Crest to protect our most vulnerable citizens at Sunny Crest Manor. And some of the things we're doing up there, there was a nice article. Put in a plug for Ben Fisher, did a nice job on reporting on that in yesterday's TH. So, so anyway, I don't plan on screening what I talk about. When I get my thoughts done, I'll send it to you. But I'll be working on that and talking to Patrice and Tom.
Right. I just want to make sure that, you know, I don't, I'm not saying you are, you are speaking out ahead of me. That's not the point. You're the chair. But I know that there have been times within the past calendar week where supervisors have indicated that the board's going a direction or doing a something or requesting something. And we want to be clear that that is only after the board has discussed it previously. So, you know, that's the idea of the unity piece of the actions that we take as a Board of Supervisors.
Okay, anything else?
No, I'm fine. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Tom. I guess we've covered the fact that there is a press conference today. So we can move into item number two, County Operations Response Plan. CDBG grant application is item 2A on the agenda.
So this is Dawn. Kelly, I see that you are on and I believe I have you on muted. If you want to go over kind of what our process has been, oops, I just muted you again. And, and how we need to move quickly with it and what we will need from the board.
Okay, sure. Thank you, Dawn. Mark Schneider is here with me as well, since he oversees the Community Development Block Grant programming. So we were made aware through Representative Eisenhardt, as well as some emails that came from the state last week, midweek about Community Development Block Grant funding, $2.4 million available statewide for communities that are not entitlement, so areas that are under 50,000, cities and counties. And we know that this money will go rapidly. So we pulled a group together, first met with Dawn and then pulled a group together that are currently working on food-related activities or programming that potentially could be expanded with additional funding from Community Development Block Grants. And so that's the budget that you see here from the group that we met with on Friday last week. Dubuque Area Labor Harvest, Project Rooted, Stevens Branch of Riverbend Food Bank, Northeast Iowa Area on Aging, Double Buck Food Program. And I'm not sure if Patrice has anything from Dubuque County Health, that's one thing that we need to find out. And then also the Regional Transit Authority. And so what we're looking at doing is potentially expanding service of all of these various programs. I did get an update from Project Rooted as far as their meal costs. And then Stevens Branch wanted me to back off a little bit because they didn't think they could potentially deliver so many meals. So our budget right now is $375,434. What's required is the budget and a letter from the Board of Supervisors that outlines the program that we're proposing. If the state likes it, then they will have us submit a full application. And that money would be potentially set aside for funding. We're estimating a six-month timeframe, but that's kind of open. We're not really sure. Typically block grants are one to three years, but knowing that this isn't going to go last that long, we're thinking about six months. It's been really awesome that so many nonprofit entities are doing such great work right now. It's incredible and it would be great if we're able to all partner to expand that. At ECIA, since we administer grants like this all the time, we would do the administration of the grant, meaning do the draws, make sure that the quarterly reports are done, make sure that the money gets spent appropriately. So the state allows $10,000 in admin, so that has been factored in as well. So really, timing is of the essence because it is emergency funding and we will be competing statewide. One of the big things to mention is that there's no match funds required. Typically with block grant, you have to have at least 50% or more of funding. And so there is no match required with this. An eligible applicant would be the, the cities and the counties. And then eligible sub-applicants would be all of these nonprofits that are participating. So we're asking if the county is interested in this program and interested in pursuing funding to continue these very important activities that are happening as a result of COVID-19.
Yes.
So what, what we would need is, we've got a draft letter that Mark worked on. I worked on the budget, he worked on the draft letter and we're going to review that today. And then we would need to get that to you to be able to sign to go with the budget.
Kelly, this is Supervisor Wickham. Do you feel that you've gone through enough cycles that this is the, the right application and the right players and the right focus? And it seems to be focused on food as our highest and greatest need at this point.
I think so, yes. The only thing I would like to confirm is if, because we can add this in as an eligible activity, do they need any supplies or materials at Dubuque County Health? Because that is something that we can ask for as well. You know, so we're focused on food, but we can also put that in the application too as a second activity. But I do, I, yeah, I do think.
We'll take 30,000 N95 masks and 100 ventilators.
If we could get them, that'd be great. Do you have a source?
No, tongue in cheek. So I'm, I'm pleased with your, I'm pleased with your proposal. And if there's, if there's some dialogue and I think move forward, but I'm very pleased that the work's been done. So thank you. I have no further questions.
Kelly, Dave Baker here. Has there been any discussion with the feds on turnaround time for this? Is this days, weeks, months? I know sometimes, I know you have Mark Schneider with you. Sometimes, you know, with flooding events, we can be talking years. So obviously, the need is, is immediate. Any, any idea to, you know, turn around time here?
Hey, Dave, Mark Schneider here. The state of Iowa has an allocation of money available to them right now. The question is how quickly they'll review the applications they receive. We're anticipating they'll receive a lot of applications. Would expect within a couple of weeks at the very outside, we'll have an answer.
This money is already money at the state level, unlike some of the other programs we've had. It was FEMA and had to go through a lot of iterations before it would actually get out to the, to the public. But in this case, the money's already been allocated to the state. I anticipate there'll be more money down the road because the bill that was just signed last Friday. But this is money that the state currently had on hand.
Okay, thank you. And then is there an advantage perhaps of, you know, getting out ahead of the pack on this? I know, I appreciate the fact that you have convened meetings, involved Dawn Sherman from Dubuque County in those meetings. So, you know, I agree Supervisor Wickham was a quick yes on this. I think it looks to me like it falls under the no-brainer category. But I guess certainly would be looking for consensus on this. So see if either Supervisor Wickham or Supervisor McDonough have any, you know, additional questions regarding the proposal.
I would like to say that I think, Mark, I appreciate your work on this and Kelly, your rep. But work and Dawn, of course. I also think you've done a good job identifying individuals in a community who are looking to increase and expand. And I don't mean that just in terms of volume or dollars, but expand services beyond the areas where they may normally work. You know, I see expanded services to Cascade, Dyersville, Piasta. And that your expansion or new includes all of Dubuque County. So thank you for, when we brainstormed this rather briefly, you know, that idea that this could be a good fit to be reflecting the, the unmet needs that we're seeing beyond the city of Dubuque. And, and I think you've done a good job in that. I hope that our cover letter will address that too, that it's, you know, with our population, we have unmet needs that we know of that exist outside the city of Dubuque. And these services provide fundings to some folks that are already there doing that work. So I appreciate that very much. I'm supporting this.
Okay, just for a point of clarification too. We cannot use any of this money within the city of Dubuque because they would get their own allocation of funding through CDBG. So we have to, as far as in tracking and reporting, we need to make sure that the funding is used in the rural areas. And when we met with the nonprofits, there's things that they're doing already, but they know there's that demand beyond. So you're right, Ann, there is a demand beyond just going out to Western Dubuque. So going north and south in the county as well. So that's what we really tried to focus. One of the things that was a concern is transportation as far as, a lot of, a lot of this is depending on volunteers. And so that's where the RTA came in and talking with Chandra, there are three vans that are available. So what we're doing is, and we can't use FTA or STA funds on a service like this because we're not transporting people, we're transporting meals. So we had to work through those logistics to be able to include the RTA in the application. But we would use a driver and we would use the vans that are available and just charge the hourly rate from being able to do that. So that was one of the things that most concerned us, you know, volunteers do so much, but how much can we count on volunteers to be driving all over the county as well? So a good partnership.
Kelly, this is Dawn.
Wonderful.
For, for the sake of helping our budget director, do, I think, I read, I believe I read that it was a reimbursable program. So do we need to appropriate money for this? I know Stella's working on an amendment. I just want to make sure that we get her the information that she needs of that. Do you know how the reimbursement process would work?
It is a reimbursement. So we draw money after we spend it. And so we anticipate about a three-week turnaround time in money that's drawn down. So you would have to have available funds. So say that Project Rooted in one month does, you know, 300 meals a week. Or I'm sorry, they do, they do 210 meals currently a day and they end up doing 300 a week. That's 1,500 meals in that week. They need to be reimbursed for those. So yeah, we would be drawing down, I don't know how often, probably monthly. He said we could draw, Mark said we could draw weekly if we have to. But yeah, that, that funding would have to be available and then we get reimbursed from the state.
Are you saying that you need funding from Dubuque County? Or are you saying you're drawing down from ECIA? What, what, I don't know who you're saying drawing down from.
The process would be that, so pick your applicant or your sub-applicant, if you will. The food bank or whoever submits an invoice to the county. At that point, we will request funds from Iowa Economic Development Authority. At which point, our best guess is it would take three weeks to turn that around before the county would receive those funds in their bank account. And then in the interim, either they would not be reimbursed or the county reimburses them during. during that three-week window. I guess it's up to the cash flow of those individual partners.
Was any, did we give them any assertion?
No. No, we didn't talk about how the money would flow with the partners. We just said we'd be requesting this money from the state. So the state wouldn't just deposit three hundred and seventy-five thousand into the county's account. We have to, we mean ECIA, need to provide them with the appropriate documentation to draw down the funds from the state that would then get deposited into the county's account. So if money is spent, it gets reimbursed to the county directly.
So what?
So it's just a matter of floating that, floating the grant funds that the partners are spending until it's reimbursed from the state.
So we, this is, we would need to appropriate funding, then, because we are the final payer?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
But we would need the funding appropriated.
Right. The county is the grantee. Dubuque County is the grantee. They're the eligible applicant. And so, yes, in the interim time, until the money comes from the state, you would have to float money to be able to pay the various nonprofit entities. Now, I mean, you could say, we're not going to pay you back until that money comes from the state. And so then, like, Project Rooted or the food bank or Northeast Iowa Aryan Agent would have to float that until the money comes in for you to pay them. And I'm not sure their capability of doing that.
Pretty sure, pretty sure they're not capable of doing that.
I would guess you're right, Dave.
Yeah, I, Mark, this is not an, this is not unusual, right? Other than getting the reimbursement back in three weeks is probably unusual. That's probably quicker than normal. But this is not unlike some of the other grants that we're involved in. Is that correct?
Yeah, it is correct. That's very accurate as to how it would be. I would note that you, I'm expecting you would need to do a budget amendment in any case to include this in your county budget for this fiscal year, or a portion of it at least.
Well, that's why we're meeting.
I feel comfortable with that. Yep. So I would, I would make, I would make a motion that we direct ECI, ECIA, excuse me, with the county participants to finish the application and to forward it to Dubuque County or Supervisor Chair Baker for his signature and submitting to the state.
The budget's going to be changed.
And so are you okay with, right now, the budget's at three seventy-five, four thirty-four? If one of the partners, it could go up or down if they say, oh, I need a little more money, or I don't need as much money. I've heard back from several of them, but, or if Patrice wants us to add in some funding for her, are you okay with that number?
My motion is for you to finish the, finish the application and have the chair sign it.
Okay. All right, that's what we'll do.
And if there's discretion within that motion.
Okay. There hasn't been a second. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Ann.
I would second that, but ask if there'd be discussion.
Okay. The motion was made and seconded, and as always, we're open for discussion.
That was just our question, that we have a firm number right now, but I still need to hear back from, like, Tom at Dubuque Flavor Harvest, and I do need to hear back from Patrice. So the budget could fluctuate either up or down. But again, there's no match required from the county.
Would it ever need to exceed four hundred thousand dollars? Would that give you the latitude to move it up and down?
I guess it depends on what Patrice would need. I don't know what the costs are, but we could cap it and just say we're going to, you know, cap it four hundred thousand and keep within that number, Ann. That wouldn't be a problem.
Kelly, could I ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
This is Stella. Is the admin cost paid directly by the state, or is that something that we also would need to request reimbursement for?
No, that's part of the budget. So it's part of the funding that you would draw from the state.
Okay.
And then reimburse us, you know, when we bill you.
So then the three seventy-five would include another ten percent on top of that?
No, that's with it. The subtotal is three forty-one, three oh-four, thirty-four, one thirty for admin. And so it comes to three seventy-five, four thirty-four. So that's included.
Kelly, I have a different sheet here. Apparently, it's three hundred and eighty-four thousand, seven sixty-eight, and then thirty-eight thousand of admin, total four twenty-three, two forty-four.
Yep, and it was reduced because Project Rooted, or no, I'm sorry, St. Stephen's branch of Riverbend Food Bank, they reduced their request from seventy-five, six hundred to seventeen, six forty. She was afraid that the numbers I had was expanding it too much, and they might not be able to fill the whole capacity. And then Project Rooted got back to me, and their amount for meals is two dollars and fifty cents a meal, not two dollars and thirty cents a meal. So with those two changes, we're at the three seventy-five, four thirty-four. I also added in RTA for some delivery because Project Rooted would like some delivery assistance. So that's also in that three seventy-five, four thirty-four amount.
Okay.
And that includes the.
And then, does the admin costs, is that something that the county would pay out and then get reimbursed for, same as the actual costs incurred by the organizations?
Correct, right. So say we worked on this for the month of May, and we send you a bill at the end of the month of May, that would be for our time that we spend on the program, correct. In order to pay us, you would pay us and then get reimbursed from the state. Or if you want to, I mean, we can float our money. So if you would just as soon say, okay, well, you know, we're going to not pay you back until we get reimbursed from the state, that's not a problem either.
Okay. So the three seventy-five, four thirty-four includes the ten percent admin?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, because on here, it was, the ten percent admin was originally thirty-eight, four seventy-six, and that went down when Project Rooted, no, I'm sorry, that went down when St. Stephen's Food Bank requested less money.
Okay.
Kelly, if you just want to forward that updated report, I can forward that on.
Yep, I will. I'm going to wait a little bit today because some of them were working over the weekend because we met on Thursday, then met again Friday morning, and then I did the budget Friday afternoon. And so the couple of them that looked at it, looked at it over the weekend. So I'll send it later this afternoon to see if I get response from anybody else.
All right, thank you.
That fits in with Supervisor Wickham's motion and the second by Supervisor McDonough. So is there any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
We had a, Supervisor McDonough, did you have some more discussion?
Well, I didn't know if we were putting in a dollar amount.
That wasn't part of the motion.
Or if it was just to complete.
Discretion for ECIA to finish the application and to get it to the board chair to sign.
And I think I just heard Kelly say that she was checking with some other organizations to update the figures. But the question of, was there a cap on this at this time? I don't think that was part of the motion, if that was your question.
But my discussion was that in, this is, because we're all, you know, at various locations, but my last point of discussion would be, did we want to put some kind of a cap so that we understand, we're giving clear direction perhaps to ECIA, what our ideas are about constraints that we might see. I understand it's without really any risk to the county, but it might be good to give them some kind of financial idea where we're standing. I'd be fine with up to four twenty-five, which is what's presented to us in the grant that we have in paper format. They just don't know what the file numbers will be.
Dave, Mark Schneider here again with that discussion. I think Patrice is on this call yet. Patrice, do you have any potential equipment or things you would be looking to add to this? That would certainly impact the dollar figure.
I, well, I'm here, I did, I was able to speak with Tom Berger and the sheriff last week. Tom did not have anything the sheriff could possibly have. One expense that I will forward that to you. He was going to kind of look with his team, but he was getting all of his supplies from Tom Berger at this time.
And this is Patrice. I apologize, I had to step out to have a conference, and I just stepped back in. I heard the last part. So if I can connect with you maybe in the next, I don't know, two hours or so? Because right now, I can't think of anything to share over the phone.
How about this, I guess, we've got the motion, and I guess I'll direct this question under discussion to Kelly Dotmeyer. Would, having a, like, a final report on this by Wednesday, would that be an undue delay? I think we go ahead with the motion, but maybe Wednesday you can give us some updated numbers, and we can insert a cap at that time, once we have a little better idea of the dollars needed.
Well, our hope is that we can just sign off and go with it to get it there as quick as possible. So if I heard back from everybody today, if you went with Supervisor Wickham's motion, we could get it submitted today or tomorrow. If you prefer to wait till final numbers on Wednesday, that's fine, too. Otherwise, we just need to, whatever you.
My motion doesn't, my motion is to do it immediately.
Right.
Just like I said, we can talk about this a lot longer and waste more time, or we can act and try to get the funding to the people that need it.
Yeah, I wasn't, I think what I would like is a report back on Wednesday with the final numbers.
Oh, sure.
We have a motion in a second.
Yeah.
Okay, is there any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Carried three to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.
Next up, we have under 2B, Board of Supervisors' employment options. And this, we'll go to Don Sherman for this, our Director of Human Resources.
So I still have ECIA unmuted. They had forwarded a concept statement to you as the board, which was included in your packet. So this is the first time that you, as a group, have been able to look at it and to be able to discuss it, or discuss it. So I would like to see if Kelly could just walk us through her concept statement and her proposal of her services that ECIA can offer.
Okay, sure. Thank you, Don. This is Kelly Dotmeyer, Executive Director with ECIA. And it was to my understanding that the board was looking for some more immediate help with some of the administrative functions of Dubuque County. And since we pride ourselves on being a regional response to local needs and an extension of city and county staff, typically, we're able to adapt quickly to what the needs are of our member governments. And in doing so, I suggested to Don that possibly we could fill that interim for you until you're able to go through a search for a county executive. Sometimes that takes three to six months. Sometimes it takes a year till you find the right candidate. But that way, it gives you some time to define the job description more thoroughly and to go out for a search, like you've done with other key positions within the county. And so I just put together the concept statement about potentially us providing that staffing for you, our ability to be able to multitask, to provide assistance to our member governments. We would assign a director position to the county. I'm proposing Ron Axel, our Employment and Training Director, as the lead person. He's got a lot of experience, thirty years actually at our agency, a lot of experience in grant writing and grant administration, also knows a lot of the players within the county and the region. He is a member of our leadership team, and our leadership team meets regularly to talk about programs and projects and things that are happening within the region. So we utilize each other as resources and being able to resolve issues within our region. So he'd be able to draw on that management team insight to be able to assist with whatever needs you may have related to this position. I noticed that a lot of your information in the job description or your draft job description is related to community outreach and outreach materials or press releases. Ron's able to rely on our administrative team that does some of the outreach materials to be able to help the county with some of that as well. And so those individuals are like Marla Quinn and Dylan Nichols and Sharon Esteban do a lot of our outreach. So there would be ability to utilize their expertise if you're needing some of that. Ron's position unfortunately is going to be ending June thirtieth with ECIA because the employment and training programs are going to larger regions versus our current region where we're partnering with Upper Explorer Land. The region's going to be twenty counties instead of the eleven that we currently have. And our ECIA board made a decision last Wednesday that unless a consortium can apply to administer the employment and training programs, our board is not interested in managing a twenty-county consortium, or twenty-county region, just because of the amount of resources and the time that it would take for me and our finance director and for Ron in managing the program, it would take away from what we provide our current county. So I was suggesting that Ron would help with this on the interim basis, up to six months or up to a year, whatever you decide the length of time should be, that we would bill based on Ron's hourly rate. I'm proposing initially at thirty-two hours a week so Ron can transition some of his work that he currently has away, because there is three months left. But also to have some time for you to, if you need Marla or Dylan to do some outreach work or to do some county materials, that that would allow that eight hours a week for that as well. This is a work in progress because we just basically talked to Don about this briefly last week. So this is my first go-around of trying to put something together. It can be flexible. Like I say, we base things based on county needs, county and city needs. So if this needs to be changed, tweaked, we're very much open to further discussing it with you.
Okay. Questions for Kelly or Don?
Kelly, do you have a proposed, Kelly, do you have a proposed hourly rate?
Currently, Ron is paid at our direct rate. And so right now, he's paid at seventy-eight, his billing rate is seventy-eight dollars an hour, and that includes benefits. So that's social security, IFRS, health, dental, life, and vision, whatnot. I need to look more closely at the position because he's paid at that rate because we are, he supervises staff. With this position, he wouldn't be supervising anybody. And so I would need to talk with Ron about potentially decreasing that slightly because when people have staff, they typically are paid at that twenty-seven grade or higher. So I would be looking at a bit lower rate because he would not be supervising any staff. And so we would have to take a look at what his rate would be below that seventy-eight. I'm estimating around probably seventy dollars an hour rate with his benefits without supervision. Yeah, and Sharon, Marla, and Dylan all bill at a lower rate than that. I'm not including any of the ECIA overhead in this. You're basically paying what their rate is for them to do this work. So I'm not adding the ECIA overhead on top of that. I would just be strictly billing at what their rate is based on their benefit package.
Okay, thank you, thank you for that, Kelly. I greatly appreciate it. Where I'm at at this point is, I think we secure services from Ed Raiber that's available through fiscal year twenty and twenty-one, which is fifteen, fifteen months. And then if we need more firepower, more resources, we go right back to ECIA. I think that's the best approach. I've worked with Ron in the past. In fact, we shared an office for about three months, about five years ago. He's a wonderful guy, he's got a lot of talent. But that's generally the direction I'm moving towards.
Supervisor McDonough, any questions or comments for Kelly or Don?
I appreciate the effort that you both have put into this, and the job description, I think, more accurately reflects some things that I would like. I think, more accurately reflects some things that I would like to see the person that is retained be able to complete. And I think that the ECIA proposal does hit the highlight of those. I have heard back from just a couple people, but considering we're all sheltering in place, I think any comment from individuals is significant about, one, are we sure what our need is? The folks are interpreting this to be a clerk. And I don't in any way see this to be a clerk position. This is a professional staff person, a professional level services to coordinate and do more things for the Board of Supervisors at this time and going forward. This is similar to what I would have designed back at the first of the year, even by the end of last calendar year, as a identified need that I have that would be helpful to Dubuque County supervisors in being more productive and more responsive to citizens and to our own employees. So I think it's a step forward in terms of how we go about this and finding such a person to hire directly, even on a temporary basis. I think we should adhere to our, our human resources protocols. And let this, if we're, if we are going to hire direct, then we should be looking at making this position available for anyone to apply for and to go through a good recruitment effort so that it is fair and equitable. We can't presume to know who in the community is now available and might want to take opportunity to apply for an $80,000 a year job. That does include the full benefit package, but that's on our, at least in proposal on our job description salary range. So reaching out and just hiring one person directly, I'm uncomfortable doing that because I think that violates the process that we need to follow at all times with regard to county funding. Hiring a particular person through ECIA allows us to better make, better be sure that our needs are met and that we are even-handed in how we approach the work that and the position. I would like this to succeed as a position so that citizens feel that the expenditure of these funds is worthwhile and that they get significant benefit back. If, if either of those things don't happen, if they don't feel there's benefit in that we have helped the county improve administratively, there's no reason to do this. So I am preferring the ECIA proposal because I think we get a broader range of services and that, that is value-added for Dubuque County at this time.
Well, I'm going to weigh in then on the, the way that Ann is describing the position. It's a rehash of the discussion we had during budget, which I was opposed to adding a position, just to be adding a position. And I, I had said that if this was due to this pandemic, due to this emergency, I would consider it. But I'm, that's not what I'm hearing. I'm hearing that, you know, want to add a, add a position and, and work in that direction. So I'm, I am going to say that I'm, at this point, I think we're doing okay with the staff we have. If this was an emergency situation with a limited term, I would probably support that. But I am not able to just add another administrative position. So.
So what do you need to see Supervisor Baker? This, the ECIA proposal is for a limited time. I'm, I am continuing to say that our needs are beyond that. That isn't to discount anything that you reflect upon in our last two meetings. You indicated that you saw some maybe unmet need on an emergency basis. There are things that we just experienced that such a person and capabilities could be. Any of the outreach and any of the coordination of announcements and changes to communication pieces could be done by somebody on an immediate basis. So, you know, it's not as if there's not, the coordination of the, the press conference, just use one tiny minute example, a press conference today at four o'clock. There isn't a way for you to communicate that to us without, it's a present. And so having there be a coordinator and administrator of those types of things to help with crafting of message and the coordination of flow of information would be helpful. I think we see that, I see it every day. And I think those needs are more, more urgent at the present time.
The other comment I'll make when you're comparing maybe a personnel individual working for the county versus ECIA's proposal, and I will state, you know, Ron Axel's a wonderful person, but even at 30 hours, at $70 an hour annualized, that's $109,000. If you compare apples to apples on a 40-hour week, their, ECIA's proposal is $145,600 versus even all in with benefits will be, you know, much, much less than that by hiring a person. So, you know, that, that's kind of what leads me to my decision is that, you know, I know ECIA's got to cover the costs and I know Ron's a, you know, highly trained executive with a lot of experience. But it, it appears to me that we'd be more efficient, we'd get a better return, if you're choosing from it. Now Supervisor Baker, I understand your point. If it's neither, so I don't want either, so I don't need to compare them, then I, I get that. But if you're comparing the two proposals, it seems, it seems clear to me to, to get additional resource at the county level, and then ECIA services still are always available if you ever needed more. And we greatly appreciate that outreach. But if you're going to take a step in the direction, it seems clear to me that the, the best bang for your buck and the most efficient use of the tax dollars would be with a, with an actual county employee.
Right. And ECIA's statement and approach, this was the result of a brainstorm conversation, I believe, with, with certainly myself and I believe with Supervisor Baker and with Dawn Sherman. So it's just a concept. And the budget proposal and the cost is yet to be determined with ECIA. I think Kelly was responding to some, you know, pointed questions that are good, but...
Yep, they'll do it for free. I'm in.
Well, and so as we go to the, you know, the other option would be that if we post and we do our own recruitment on a brief level or abbreviated format, I would defer to the expert that we have in place about human resources, Dawn Sherman. Dawn's recommendation is that we look strongly, you know, I understood from our last meeting, Dawn said we should look strongly at ECIA, ECIA's proposal. If we're thinking that's too expensive, then we would want to look at maybe doing our own search at the county level to be sure that we are making it available to all citizens and we can look at timeline for that. It could still be a person with a limited contract time, Dave. That doesn't really, doesn't necessitate that we make this be a permanent hire.
So this is Dawn's, so what I have heard from the board is that time is of the essence. We, you know, we're losing time. We're losing communication capacity by continuing to have these discussions down the line. So either one of these options will, as soon as you act, will get resources to you quickly. Both options allow that, that through, we hire someone or we hire ECIA, both are ready to, to take action very quickly. If we were to do a recruitment, that would be, in my opinion, a minimum of two weeks. And now you're two weeks farther along in this crisis. So again, not, not, not recommended. If it was a different situation, if you were looking at a permanent hire, I would recommend we would go through a full recruitment. And again, this gives you, either option gives you a test run to see if this is something that you would want to keep on long-term. Both of these options can be on a month-to-month basis or a limited basis, as you, as the board, recognize how you're utilizing this individual. So, you know, if, if this is about timeliness and you need that resource now during this crisis, either option is going to get you there and either option gives you the ability to, give you some time to evaluate your long-term need. But a, a limited recruitment is just going to set you back time. It, it would offer you the option of seeing other qualified candidates. But again, you're losing time. And if that's, if you need somebody here quickly, that would not be the optimal option.
You know, we could actually have this person, if we hire through ECIA to begin this week. This morning, as I listened to the update from our, our emergency team, there could be some benefit to them by communicating with one person who then kind of updates us as supervisors as well and follows through on some of our individual questions. Maybe I'm the one with the most individual questions, but it adds another element direct to the board that is, other than the three of us who can't coordinate and have any common conversation about what we're, we're all at individually. Our response to shelter in place and the, the communications that went out about that were fractured and they were, you know, not, not in any way unified. And some person working on that with the knowledge of individual board members could have been helpful and might have resulted in, you know, better service for the county.
I would, at this point, it sounds like we have Supervisor Wickham recommending the Dubuque County position on a limited-term basis. Is that correct Supervisor Wickham?
Well, maybe I'll, 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 I'll make a motion and we'll, we'll see where, where it goes. I think I have direction in my head, but I'm, we'll give clarity from my colleagues. So I will make a motion that to direct Dawn Sherman to offer an employment agreement to Ed Raiber to secure his services for fiscal year 20 and fiscal year 21, ending after those 15 months. And that if, if the offer agreement can be agreed upon between the two parties, she creates a personnel requisition and delivers it to the board on Wednesday.
Okay. There was a motion made. Is there a second? Hearing none. Motion dies for lack of a second. I'm going to comment. It's been pointed out at other meetings about not having information available at the meeting. So we, I scribbled down some notes about ECIA's proposal cost-wise. So I'm going to ask Dawn to do a side-by-side and include the fringe benefits, because I don't think they're included in the board executive director position. So lay out the cost of both proposals and bring it back to us on Wednesday. We have a scheduled meeting on Wednesday. And I think at that time, we can make a decision or not make a decision if we don't deem the position necessary.
So I have that, I have that information and I can, I definitely have that, put it in the packet for Wednesday. Kelly, would you be able to get us a more concrete dollar estimate for your, your proposal by Wednesday? Or by tomorrow, actually, so I can include it in the, in the packet?
Yep, I can do that this afternoon, Dawn. And I guess my question is, I was looking at this as very temporary, like a six-month timeframe so that you could do a search. And now the proposal for Ed Raiber was, you know, 12 to 18 months. You know, I guess I need clarification. What are you looking for? Short-term six months or 12 to 18 months?
Maybe an hourly rate, and then we can determine the timeframe. So I mean, that's a variable.
Right. That will make the rate more, that'll increase the rate if it's subject to six months or 18 months, wouldn't it, Kelly?
Yeah. What I'll do is I'll look at, I'll talk with our Finance Director and with Ron. And I'm going to look more closely at, I had a draft job description, but it looked like with the packets, there was an actual job description. So I will look at that and compare it to some of our other positions and then give Dawn the rate reflective. And I can show it for, for six months and I can show it out for a year, annualize it for a year.
So Supervisor Baker, I like your proposal and idea, but I will throw out one caveat at this point that may turn this. So I'm at this point not, not interested at this point in securing ECIA's services. So the only way that it's going to move forward on Wednesday is if Supervisor McDonough and Supervisor Baker are interested. And so that's just a point of clarification. If the other two want to comment.
Supervisor Wickham, are you, so as we explore what each of our interests are, is your interest in doing a short-term recruitment? Do an abbreviated recruitment?
No, no. No. My motion was, my motion was a staff member that we have for 15 months that we know is a known commodity to, to fulfill this position. In normal times, I would, I would certainly confer that, agree we should do a long search, but in the unprecedented times we're in, and when every day matters, I think we need to move more decisively. So that's, that's where I'm at.
So we could do a 30-day search. The comment I would have about hiring a specific person that has had contact with one or two of us is that we appear, again, to be hiring with preference persons in mind, similar to how we did Resources Unite. So we can't, we cannot do that again. No matter what the timeframe is, we need to look at this as, to make it an option for all citizens who wish to be applying for this position. And we need to look at that beyond whom we personally know. That, I think we can't abandon the HR principles for this. It's a, it's an employment position. So if you're saying it's either hire Ed Raiber or it's nothing, then I think that you should commit to that. And then we can, we can drop the facade of looking at whether or not this is beneficial. We're getting a report now unofficial that the Governor's Office announced 88 new COVID cases in Iowa and five in Dubuque County. That will be the press release, the press according to, I think, a reputable person who's probably watching it come in and while we're in this meeting. So, you know, it is, it's time to make a decision, but we can't necessarily give up all of the things that we've worked to put in place with HR.
I, I understand your point. I just, just disagree. So that's fine.
You disagree about what piece?
Well, I disagree with just the concept and that we should wait two weeks and go out and extend this. I just don't think we have the time. The other thing I think is also just, you know, you know, we clearly are at ECIA getting a person. It's Ron Axel. I mean, there's no other option, right, Kelly? I mean, this, it's a person. So you're really comparing two people.
Well, you're actually, you're, I'm, I'm providing Ron Axel, but I'm also providing the support of our outreach team. So that's the difference, I think, is that if there needs to be a press release done, if there needs to be outreach done, you've got additional resources. Also, when you look at the grant aspects, because some of this position that I read over the weekend was related to, you know, looking for grants. You've got somebody who, as the block grant came in, would say, oh, I know, I better get ahold of Mark Schneider, talk to him right away. Oh, you know what? I see a, a public health grant. I need to talk with Patrice right away. So it's that knowledge of the team here at ECIA as well as the knowledge of, of Ron. So I think you are getting a little more than just a person.
Agreed, agreed. And I'm assuming that, that same value would be available regardless who the person was. And at one point, the other candidate even worked for ECIA. So, so I'm confident we can have your services and I really appreciate your services.
I really need to clarify. This person worked for ECIA over 25 years ago. So I know it gets thrown out a lot of times that this person worked for ECIA, but this person, Ed Raiber, has never worked for me. I've been here as director. This is my 20th year. He has never worked for me. I think Ed's a great person. I think Ed's got a lot to offer. I would definitely agree that he's got a lot of abilities and he's a really good person. But I don't want to have anybody be confused with that he worked at ECA and I'm making a recommendation for Ed because I can't. I don't provide references that way. So, so I just ask that we not talk about, yes, he worked at ECA, but not under my direction.
Right. And we're getting, or at least I am privately getting comments saying that we don't want to hire a friend, again, all capital letters. So we want to be sure that we're doing this for the right reason and with the right process in mind. And, and aside, and so Jay, I think this comes to you, that whether or not this job... that whether or not this job at this time, this position, can withstand other people being considered or this has to be Mr. Raiber who, or no one?
I just think time is of the essence. So if you'd, you'd clarify that and just your comment about friends, I wish I had that many friends in Dubuque. So none of the people I've ever hired have been, been friends. I've, I've hired thousands of people over my career and that's, that's not the approach I take. You look for competency, you look for experience, you look for dedication. And those are skills that you look for, for in people. So I'm, I'm, I'm fine, my conversation's over. I think at this point, it appears to me we'll, we're at a standstill, we won't move forward. So I'm, I'm, I'm okay at that, that point. And we can follow Supervisor Baker's recommendation on Wednesday, that, that's fine with me.
Would, are you likely to join in and be able to reach consensus on that, Jay? As you walk out of your frame?
Yeah, it's okay if I walk out of my frame, isn't it? Stretch my back, I've had back surgery a couple of times, got neck problems too.
Seriously, I'm just asking if, if, if this conversation is over or if we're going to be able to reach consensus?
I don't think it's, I don't think it's going anywhere today. I think we just aren't agreeing today, which is fine. That's, 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 you know, that's what we do as a board. We have to have discussions, so it's okay. So I, I feel we've reached an impasse today. And so I would be, at this point, if you're looking for recommendations, since my motion wasn't second, I would take Supervisor Baker's recommendation to bring back comparisons and have another shot at it on Wednesday.
Okay, sounds good. We'll move forward, we'll get some more information and we'll talk about it again on Wednesday. All right, next up is, is there anything else to be brought up regarding the COVID-19 issue pandemic and anything from Patrice or Tom? I, I did see a comment about the 88 new cases in Iowa and five in Dubuque County. And I don't know if Patrice or Tom, if you want to comment on that, are they still on? Yeah.
And Dave, I'm sending you that right this minute. It's with the press conference that the governor will be doing this afternoon.
Okay.
Dave, if I might, I think we have one piece that we did get a report on. I actually haven't had a chance to read it. But if, I don't know if Jody Jansen or May Hinchen are with us, but they did send us a written report, I think that dropped right about the same time the meeting started. We had asked about some mental health numbers, telehealth and some peer support information. I had asked about peer support contact numbers. So I don't know if anyone, any of our staff or our regional CEO is available to give us an update short of, or if we're going to just wait till Wednesday, that's fine too, I guess.
We have Jody or May on the, what's that? Okay, Jody, would you like to give your report, please?
Yes. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning, Jody.
Hi. We did contact our providers for the crises and mental health services. And Foundation Two provided two documents that were sent to the board. They provided data on total calls since COVID-19. The calls are reported on the PowerPoint. And as of the 26th, the calls were up to 55. Baseline earlier in the month was about at 10 to 16 per day. And then when we talk about the tax crisis line calls, they have gone up increasingly since March 17. And the totals for this month are so far 92. And again, the increase started increasing right around March 17. As we had talked about the other day, the warm line increased hours now 2:00 to 10:00 P. M. every day.
The warm line is the peer support line where when someone calls the warm line, they're speaking to a, a person who has lived experience and also training to handle these calls, right?
Correct. Their average was about seven per day and they are now up to about 22 calls per day. A few of those callers had to be transferred to Foundation's crisis line because they had some suicide, suicidal comments. The executive director from the Abbey Center did also include that their staff are providing outreach by doing check-in calls between appointments with the psychiatrist, they're checking and make sure everybody's okay, providing mental health tips, general support, and whether they need to move their appointments up. And of course, they are greatly utilizing telehealth and of course, the telephone Zoom when it's available. Hillcrest Family Services provided this, this, a similar kind of update on March 27 and continued today. The mental health center here in Dubuque, they have suspended all in-person therapy and medication management. However, all services are be, being provided from telehealth, Zoom, or the telephone. They are still open regular hours, but most of the providers are working from their home. Mobile crises outreach, all of the in-person dispatches have been suspended and the crises response are being provided over the telephone only. The admissions to the crisis stabilization beds have been suspended. I have some numbers here they just sent. Hold on, I gotta switch screens. They have had, since, they said there has been 31 calls for the month of March and of those, 13 calls were between the 15th and the 29th. There was 12 for Mercy and Finley, E R S, and 11 of those were diverted. And by that, they mean it prevented hospitalization. There was also four calls from law enforcement and those were all diverted from hospitalization and/or further criminal activity. Their integrated health homes and Hillcrest supported living services are being provided by the telephone only. Services can be provided in pers, person if there is a need. The ACT program is operational as usual. In-home services are monitored for safety, but they are limiting them as much as possible. The adult and child residential are not accepting any new admissions at this time. Peer support-
You are muted.
The wellness center is closed, but the lead support specialist utilizes Facebook, including the messenger, emailing, Zoom, telephone, and, and has even been sending out friendly greeting cards to those consumers. When we talk about regional activities of marketing of crises and mental health help, I did go ahead and contact the other eight coordinators in the region and they are including the information on county websites and updated to include Iowa helpline, crises response information, as well as the increased warm line hours. County Facebook pages have been updated with the information, as well as they have one. The E C R Facebook site includes this information as well. And the regional website has been recently updated by the regional CEO. Here in Dubuque County, as Ann mentioned the other day, I T has pulled out that crises help resource information from the M H D S site to the front page of the county page. The Iowa helpline crises resource information has also been posted to the Dubuque County Facebook page. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Jody. Any questions for Jody? Thank you for the report.
Oh, thank you, Jody.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Jody.
Welcome.
Okay, are there any other issues or questions? We'll move on in the agenda then. We do have a couple of business items on the agenda. Item number three is a resolution regarding appointment of deputies, assistants, and clerks. Dawn, do you have any comments on this? It looks like a couple of sheriff's department employees and just have your recommendation.
Yeah, so these are our essential workers, all of our workers in the jail. So I would recommend immediate approval of these.
Motion to approve.
I will second that.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the resolution. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, carried three to zero. All right, next up is item four on the agenda, approval of Platts. Do we have Tammy Henry on the call? We have a plat. It is Weedman Farm subdivision number three, final plat.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I hear you, Tammy.
Okay, just making sure. I'll go ahead and read this as if I was standing in the chambers, okay? "Property is owned by Mary Weedman and is located adjacent to the city of Asbury along Asbury Road with a total of 9.60 acres surveyed. The property is zoned R2 single-family residential. The purpose is to separate Lot 1 and Lot 2 for sale purposes. The survey creates three lots. Lot 1 is a total of 2.69 acres surveyed and it will be sold to the neighbors. Lot 2 is a total of 4.49 acres surveyed and it will be sold. Lot 3 is a total of 2.42 acres surveyed and it will remain in current ownership and use. Lot 1 will use an existing field entrance off of Asbury Road and Lot 2 and Lot 3 will use an existing residential entrance off of Asbury Road. There were no additions or corrections required for this plat and there are no liens or mortgages on this property. All signatures are current. This plat has been reviewed by myself as Platts officer and has all the required signatures. I respectfully recommend approval." This is a pretty basic, simple plat. It's a residentially zoned property and we have Lot 1 and Lot 2 are basically changing some property lines. Lot 3 will be a new creation and that will eventually have a home site, but that may be years down the road. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Tammy regarding the plat?
No.
No.
I'll make a motion to prove the plat as presented.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the plat regarding the Weedman Farm subdivision number three, final plat. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, carried three to zero, it is approved.
Right, thanks, everybody.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and then we go on to agenda item number five, resolution approving consent to decree order.
So you had previously tabled this. This is an abandoned property in which squatters are in there. And so the city, in order to take possession of that and, and address the public health and public safety issues, which that is creating, needs for the city to transfer the title, or the county to transfer the title. It's my understanding it was tabled because there was some questions about if there's any lost tax revenue for the county. So I did speak with the city attorney and she indicated that they are current on their property taxes. Now, that is, it's unknown if they've made this current one that's due today or tomorrow. But if that is the case, that they have not paid this current March tax bill, the county could potentially lose their share of that payment, which the total payment is $1,600. So obviously, we, the, the county would only lose their share of that bill. And we do have C J online as well, if you have any questions regarding the, the process.
Okay, and the recommendation is that we go forward and with the approval, is that correct?
Yes.
With the resolution. Any questions for Dawn or county attorney May? Now, we, again, we have-
Has this, has this been, have we ever done this before?
C J, I, I have you unmuted.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Dawn. Supervisor Wickham, I, in the last year or so, I have not seen one of these. I think from what Randy tells me in the treasurer's office, that these are becoming a little more common. So I think the city has been trying to take a proactive stance on properties that are kind of just sitting, you know, empty. You know, the statute before they can file that petition requires it to be, quote-unquote, abandoned for at least six months. And then according to the various, you know, notice provisions to all people involved. I understand that the mortgage has signed the consent. So it's either basically consent to it or, you know, the city would go ahead and set it for a hearing, prove out their case and, I would standard judgment that way.
Well, I probably won't get back until about 5:30 or 6:00.
Who else is on the phone, please mute.
We have somebody, could please mute their phone? All right, C J, there was some background noise, somebody on a telephone.
Oh, I'm scared.
Apologize for that.
Let me see. I see that the city attorney has emailed me. I'm not sure if, are you unmuted now?
Can, can you hear me?
Yes.
I am, this is Krena.
Hi, Krena.
Hello, I can certainly answer questions for you. At this point, the, there was a foreclosure pending in conjunction with this by the financial institution. The financial institution has taken title to the property and has consented to the city taking title to it after discovering all of the issues and complications at the property. As Dawn mentioned, there are squatters. They're, they are living there without utilities and at one point, we're discovered to have illegally tapped into electricity and then we're using gas to heat property. So there are some serious safety concerns at the property as well and it's in very close proximity and actually shares a water line with two other homes. So we are trying to get this going so that we can get that situation resolved. And then the intent would be, if possible, to rehabilitate the property, get it back into good-standing, tax-paying status for both the city and the county.
Wonderful, this is Supervisor Jay Wickham. I appreciate your, your city's proactive stance on, on moving forward with that. Hopefully, the board of supervisors will see this action and as a precedent and an example. We have numerous abandoned properties and trailers throughout the county and our board has been pretty, pretty laid back on those. And as recently as, within the last six months, one of those properties started on fire and burned to the ground. So I appreciate the city's leadership on this and trying to be proactive and take care of this. And Krena, I appreciate you attending our meeting to explain that. And I'll be supporting this resolution and I'll be highly encouraging the county to follow similar steps in our properties throughout, throughout our unincorporated areas. in our properties throughout, throughout our unincorporated areas.
Okay. Any other questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution as presented.
Okay.
I guess my question, Dave, would be that I think it would be important to note that this is the kind of action that an administrative person could be asked to coordinate countywide, that we could have knowledge, prepare some kind of procedure that's administrative only to be proactive about these properties. And if this is an issue the board would like to work on to reduce the potential for safety risk, this is something that we need to have an administrative person help us with. I mean, it's a clear example of how that would work.
Not sure I agree with that. It's a clear example, Ann, but I understand your opinion. Is there a second to the motion? I will second it. Is there any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Carried three to zero. All right, one other item that's not on the agenda is the time of the meeting on Wednesday. We had briefly discussed that on Friday, and it was as a result of the Wednesday conference call for Patrice and Tom, Patrice Lambert and Tom Berger. And they have a conference call at 10 o'clock on Wednesdays. It's their-
And I'm sorry, this is Patrice, and they actually moved our Wednesday meeting up to tomorrow. So right now, we do not have a Wednesday scheduled. So I apologize. It's always been Wednesday, but we just got notification it's going to be tomorrow instead. Now, we don't know if they'll continue with the one that's scheduled on Wednesday or not.
Okay, well, thank you for that, Patrice, and I think that took care of our issue. We were scheduled for 10 o'clock, and it sounds like it's not conflicting with our COVID response team. So I would suggest that it's a non-issue. We'll stay with 10 o'clock Wednesday.
Can I ask if we're meeting on Friday?
At this time, we don't have anything scheduled. I think we can, we can do that. We can-
Discuss that on Wednesday?
Yeah, we can discuss it on Wednesday. So that'll get, be plenty of time to get it posted if we decide we need to meet, so.
Wonderful. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Actually, it would be recess until 10 o'clock Wednesday.
So moved to recess.
Is there a second?
Second, again.
Okay, motion made and seconded to recess until 10 a.m. on Wednesday. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you all.
Have a great day.
Thank you, everyone.
Goodbye.
Goodbye.